Going to go ahead and call our meeting to order, uh, school board meeting for October 12th, 2023. I appreciate everybody being here today. It's a beautiful day. I know there's probably a lot of other more fun things you could be doing than sitting here at a board meeting, but thank you for being here. Our first order of business is, uh, we are going to say the pledge of allegiance and I'm going to introduce our senior representative from Harbor High School. Today is Nora Shetanji. If, where'd she go? There she is. If you'll come up here and lead the pledge, we'll do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Nora, um, I've got a, an information sheet on you here that's got an awful lot of really big things that you've been involved in at Harbor, but I'm, I'm not gonna read that off. I'm gonna let you talk to us and tell us what you think is the most important stuff on here that we need to know about you. So go ahead.
Yes, sir. So I have been in the Springdale School District for most of my life. I went to Bernie's Young Elementary and I went to Helston and I currently go to Harbor High School. I'm a senior at Harbor High School. I've spent three years there and I'm involved in debate, Model UN, mock trial, and a few other clubs. Um, I actually restarted the Model UN team at my school and I'm currently senior class president. Um, and I've taken 12 APs at Harbor High School. And-
You're bored, aren't you?
And in my free time, I really like art. I like drawing and sewing and doing activities such as that. And in the future, I hope to go to Columbia University. I'm applying this fall and I want to be a press secretary when I grow up for the White House.
Wow. Fantastic. Well, it's awesome, Board. Does anybody have any, uh, questions for Nora?
Can you tell us what Model UN is?
Yes, so Model UN is Model United Nations and so it's basically a competition where you pretend as if you were at the actual United Nations. And so we get to be a company, or a country, and we represent being a delegate for that country. And you basically go to this conference and you argue about resolutions and things that should be done as if you were at the United Nations.
Tell us about the restarting of it. What did-
So I did it, I did it my sophomore year and during my sophomore year, there was only about six students involved. And so my junior year, the program, we didn't have a program, um, because the person who led it left and graduated. And so this year, um, I restarted it with a foreign exchange student, actually. And so we have 12 members as of right now.
Um, your AP classes, which one's your favorite?
Um, currently my AP, my favorite AP class is probably AP Research because it's a lot of self-guided learning. And so I get to really focus on what I'm interested in and go really deep on those topics that I usually don't get to explore in class.
So do you write like a paper at the end of that class about all your research? Is that how that works?
Yes. So you choose one topic and you write a 5,000-word paper on that topic. Um, but that's your entire assignment for the year.
And that's your favorite one? Wow. Okay. Well, you, you may make a great press secretary all day. So, Board, is there any, any other questions? Well, we really appreciate you being here this evening. We're gonna look forward to watching how you progress through school and hopefully one of these days we'll see you on the big stage.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being, oh, are your parents here?
Absolutely amazing.
My parents are not here.
Okay. Well, I'm sure they're proud of you. So, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Good job.
Great job.
Okay, so, uh, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, sir. We made an amendment before the meeting. Uh, on the original agenda, we had the national merit semifinalist that we're gonna be here, but, uh, both of them requested to go ahead and move to November.
Okay.
And so it's up to you, Mr. President. We eliminated G and so we'll invite them back next month. So, other than that, it's, okay.
I need a, a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bell, a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. That brings us to our consent agenda. There's not a whole lot on our consent agenda any longer, uh, but the board meeting, uh, minutes from last month are on there. Does anybody have any, uh, changes that need to be made, any questions about any of that? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Ramos and a second by Mr. Emerson to, uh, approve the consent agenda as submitted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that brings us to the fun stuff. I'm gonna pass it off to Dr. Cleveland and we got a lot of folks to recognize.
That's great. Thanks, sir. Our, our first recognition is it's National Principals Month. I don't know if you've been able to see on our social media accounts, Mr. Jones and his team have been sending pictures out of our principals. We do, I believe, I'm very biased in this regard, but I believe we have the, the best principals and assistant principals in the district team in the country, not just the state. They're wonderful people. But we have a little video, I believe, or slide. Would you mind to, to play that real quickly? If you don't know who they are, you're gonna get introduced to them real quickly. Is it playing?
It's playing.
No. Dr. Smith, does this have sound to it? No, okay. I can provide the sound, but if you know, you don't want me to say it. Uh, Dr. Smith, would you like to get up and see? No. These are our principals and, uh, they're outstanding people and I know you know them and I know you know they're outstanding. But they, they carry the district forward and do great work. Our teachers, classified staff, and our sped staff, everyone that's here. These are the people that move, move the world for us. Maybe if we do this next year, we'll have music.
Looks like the AC is providing the music for us.
Yeah. If you don't care, let's go around. We have her in the room, so thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Rodney Ellis to the, to the podium. There he is. We have a couple of awards for our really fantastic partners, so.
Hey, good evening, Board. Um, we've got a couple of partners that I wanted to recognize this, this meeting. And so these are partners that we have on, um, several levels throughout the district. So I'd like to ask Ms. Corinda Allen to please come out. We've got a short, yeah, short video clip, I believe. It was really short, wasn't it? Not what I expected. So anyway, we have-
My name is Cole Ellis. I work for Beaver Water District and I'm a maintenance mechanic one. So we do quite a bit of different stuff. Um, really anything in the water process that gets broken, we fix. We usually get a call from our operators, uh, they've got something going on. We'll come down, troubleshoot it, figure it out, and then take it apart and put it back together, fixed, hopefully. In high school, I went through the CAS program in Cylone where we did industrial maintenance. And then I went through the BIT program here in Springdale. Um, I took a couple motor controls classes and some PLC classes and that was actually how I got the opportunity to be reached out to through that program. So I'd say I get to do a new thing every day. There's so much here and I've been here for almost two years now and I still probably don't know where everything is. Uh, it's just a really big field. There's a, there's a lot in it. Um, so many ways you can branch off into. And as far as maintenance goes, uh, I'm never gonna be out of a job here, that's for sure.
So here at Beaver Water District, we supply wholesale drinking water to our four major cities in Northwest Arkansas. So we take water from Beaver Lake and we bring that onto our treatment plant facility. From there, the water is treated and then we disperse that water to the four major cities. We definitely, um, have it on our books and in conversations with Springdale School District, um, with working with the schools locally at the high school level to provide internship opportunities, um, to students wide range from heavy equipment to maybe office or clerical work. Here at Beaver Water District, we're gonna have over 40% of our workforce retiring within the next 10 years. And we've got to build those pipelines to backfill those positions. The main thing I would like to get across is just advocate for our students. We've got to change the perception. It is not just a college-bound path, which there are careers that, that absolutely is necessary. But we've got to educate the students and most importantly, we've got to educate their parents to get their support and their backing because they are the future workers coming in.
So Trent and his crew shot that video for a series of workforce videos and we have several of those. So really good work and we appreciate that. And we appreciate Corinda Allen's partnership with us along with Beaver Water District. So Corinda, would you like to speak and say a few words?
Hi, thank you guys for having me this evening and it's, it's such an honor. And I'm gonna say that I am privileged and honored to work with you guys' school district. Um, you guys are advocates for that student. Um, and I can say that about you guys very confidently. And I've worked in the four major cities and I'm currently working side by side. But I can say every staff member that I come across, uh, any teacher, I mean, even the students will tell you like inside of the schools, like you guys are thinking outside of the box. It, it's okay that things were done a certain way for so long, but you guys are thinking outside of that box and you're providing opportunities for students who maybe just didn't have any hope or an opportunity for your career path in the future. I mean, I just look at people that I went to school with and man, if someone had been advocating for all of us, how different some people's lives could be. So just thank you all for all of the work that you do put into your staff and to your students because it is making a difference. Thank you guys so much.
So we'd like to present you with a certificate and for, we really appreciate this partnership. So thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I have one other gentleman here. Um, he's not gonna be here tonight, but we have Brenner Lay, Ken Stuckey. He's the HR director there. So he had work issues to take care of. But Brenner Lay is a, a great partner with us. They spent all day, as Corinda did today, with our Trade and Industry Day that we had at, um, Don Tyson School of Innovation. We had 46, uh, school programs from across Northwest Arkansas, 10. We had 40-plus vendors. And we had, uh, actually a DTSOI student got hired by Riggs Caterpillar today. That's our first high school student to get hired by Riggs Caterpillar out of Little Rock. So that was really great for that young man. Um, they're wanting to hire four more out of that program this year. So we really appreciate these people, what they do. Um, and we really appreciate Corinda and Ken and our other partners who are part of this that, um, we'll continue to name and make sure they get branded. So any questions or?
Awesome.
Thank y'all. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Cleveland and members of the board. Um, tonight, I'd like to recognize and say a sincere thank you to two wonderful community partners for the contributions they have made to Springdale students and families. First, I'd like to recognize Ms. Lee Wecaster, if you'll come on up here, the owner of Milk and Sugar, for donating over 400 bars of confetti soap. And if you've never seen confetti soap, it's like the coolest thing that you'll ever have in your hand. It's pretty amazing. Confetti soap. It's, this is an interesting fact. We have the hardest time getting donation of hygiene products. So toothpaste, toothbrush, deodorant, soap, any of those things. So we're so, uh, we feel very thankful to receive this donation. This will allow us to serve many, many families and if you would, just please join me with a round of applause for Mrs. Wecaster.
Thank you. I'm-
Turn this down for you a little bit.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I really appreciate, um, the invitation to be here today. Uh, if you don't know about us, um, I own a very small little bath and body, um, shop on Emma Street. Everything's handmade and all natural. And every year during the month of August, I, um, have created a, a, um, an event called Soap Giving. And so what that is, it's a two-week event. I bring in the community and for every bar of soap that the community purchases during that time, I will donate a full bar to a specific charity, um, organization in the area. And this year, we wanted to, we always wanna work with local air, um, local partners and the Treehouse Pantry was the perfect fit this year. So, yeah.
I have this certificate for you today and I would like to present this to you in our appreciation. And if we haven't talked for here, I don't know where he is.
He left. Let's go ahead, let's go ahead and pose.
Here, I'm gonna let you hold that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to recognize Mr. Terry Clark. If you'll come on down, Mr. Clark. He's the owner of Spring, of the Springdale Burger Kings for donating $5,000 to Springdale students and families. These funds will be used to support the needs of students. It'd be food, clothing, internet, school supplies, school fees, anything that students need, we use those funds to fill those needs. Um, I have a, also a, a certificate for you as well today. Would you like to say anything?
Just that it's all about the kids.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Well, here we go. I'm gonna let you hold that. Thank you.
Thank you all for being such great partners. Well, Board, you, uh, you went to a very special event last week, wasn't it? Where we had our governor and our secretary who both attended for an event that Mr. Tapey, Mr. Michael Tape, Tape didn't even know about. I know Michael is here.
He's here. He's on the front row.
Okay. Michael, do you mind to come forward while I talk about you just a little bit? And then you can speak.
Okay.
Because I'd like to know what you think. But I, I remember interviewing Michael Tape when I was deputy, six, seven years ago.
Uh, this is your age.
Eight years. Okay, you're getting old. And, uh, and I, I recall our conversation. And I interview a lot of people, but, uh, Michael really struck me then. Um, he had several options, out of district and within district. And I really thought he might pick higher level, junior higher high school, but he didn't. He chose to be a middle school teacher. And wow, has he been a middle school teacher. Not just, uh, of all kids. He actually taught mine and helped mine. In fact, Camden would say he's my favorite and has, even dressed like him one day. So I wanna-
In sixth grade.
Yeah, in sixth grade. I wanna congratulate you and it was so nice to see that event. They were all, all of our board was there supporting that, uh, event and you. So we just wanna recognize you in front of the board and tell you thank you and appreciate you staying in Springdale and looking forward to a long retirement career you're riding.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, fantastic.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Oh, am I saying something to you?
Say whatever you want to say.
Well, I did, I did just wanna acknowledge, I, I was thinking about the fact that I had seen all of you there, um, last Tuesday. So it's good to be back in front of you, but thank you so much for making time out of your day to come. And, and I mean, what a, what an incredible surprise, right? I didn't, I didn't know, I, as I said at that event, I had so many thoughts of why, why do we not know more about what the governor is going to be saying while we're here? Uh, I feel like I normally know what's happening at our school and, uh, that, now I understand why. So, yeah, I mean, just an incredible honor. Uh, I am incredibly thankful to work in Springdale Public Schools. I would not want to work anywhere else. And I'm incredibly thankful to work at the best middle school in the, in the universe. So, uh, under the, the greatest leadership, knowing that it's Principals Month, um, Dr. Byford and her team, uh, do incredible things to empower us teachers. As Dr. Byford and as Lowell Milken said multiple times, like getting an award like this doesn't happen in isolation. It just can't. Uh, I cannot be a successful teacher without the support of my peers and then my admin and then our, our, our district admin, our school board. It really is a, a team effort that empowers us to do what we do every day with students. And so I'm just really thankful for the opportunity to get to hone my skills in the best district in the world. So thank you so much.
I was gonna say, I saw the social media post where, uh, Mr. Milken called your parents.
That was, that was fun.
That was, that was really a, a cool, cool deal.
Yes.
It seemed like they were genuinely surprised and, and overwhelmed by the whole thing.
Very much so. Yes, yes. You, you could hear my mom at one point be like, hey, who's talking right now? Like, what, she didn't say those exact words. She's like, what's happening? And then, then he launched into it more and it's just silent as they, as they listened. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's so cool.
It was. Yes. So thank you.
Board, does anybody have anything they'd like to, I mean, we all know Michael and it's hard to get all seven of us at the same place at the same time. So that was, I was-
I, that's what I'm saying. I was super honored, yes. There was so many people there. I was-
Do you always wear a coat and tie to school?
I mean, to be totally honest, that's not super abnormal, but I was, I was talking to Mr. Thompson the night before, or one of our assistant principals, and he said, hey, are you gonna wear a tie tomorrow? I said, I think I'm gonna go more like unbuttoned look. He said, I'm, I'm gonna wear a tie. I was like, oh. I guess I'll wear a tie too. He said, well, Dr. Byford wanted everyone to know this was, we were dressed, dressed like the best we've ever been dressed. I'm like, I guess I'll wear a tie. So I'm really glad I wore a tie.
Governor wore jeans.
And, that's true. That's true.
I had a coat on and she wore jeans. I'm like, what the heck?
I, now we all know. We can do that.
I thought that part was awesome.
Yeah.
I saw a lot of comments on social media, um, from several different posts, tons and tons of people. And everything I saw was just praising your name and your work and-
Thank you.
Everything that you do. So we're super thankful and grateful.
Thank you. Yes, responding to texts and emails has become a, a very much full-time job. It's, uh, and it's, it's an incredible blessing to have so many people.
And you said it in public now, you can't go anywhere else. You're, you're locked in.
Hey, I'm, I'm very content to-
It's in the minutes. Yeah, it's in the minutes.
It's in the minutes. There we go. It's official. It's, it's very official. I have no need to go anywhere else. This is the best place.
Thanks for being here. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much. It's been a great time.
Well, good evening, Board. Um, I'm here tonight to give some big celebrations and recognize some schools for their hard work. Um, the Office of Educational Policy releases several reports after our ACT Aspire data comes out. Um, they've issued the Northwest Arkansas Landscape Report, which gives an overview of schools in the region that are beating the odds despite their high levels of poverty in achievement and in growth. They give an overall growth report, which ranks schools, um, who overall, um, have scored exceptionally well with their growth. And then they also issue a beating the odds report, which, um, identifies schools who have high levels of poverty and are beating the odds with high growth. And so I wanted to recognize the Northwest Arkansas Landscape Analysis Report. Um, they share new research about the school landscape in Northwest Arkansas and examine school quality of area schools who are beating the odds in the nation and the state. And, um, I'm very pleased to announce that John Tyson Elementary School was one of 10 schools in the state of Arkansas named as a school where students demonstrate very high achievement. So that's actually students scoring, um, ready and exceeding on the ACT Aspire. So congratulations to Tyson. They also do the same thing for schools with growth. Um, so this report identifies 32 schools throughout the region that are beating the odds and demonstrating growth in the top 25% of the schools statewide. So congratulations to Hunt Elementary, Tyson Elementary, Bay Area Elementary, George Elementary, Helston Middle School, Turnbo Elementary, Walker Elementary, NAP Elementary, Helen Tyson Middle School, and Harp Elementary for being in the top 25% of schools in the state for high growth. So now I want to recognize the award winners and principals. When I call your school, if you'll come forward, I'll give you your certificate. Um, first, we're gonna do the overall growth, um, for the state of Arkansas. So best growth scores overall 2023, congratulations to Hunt Elementary School. They, they were ranked 17th in the state of Arkansas. And you might as well stay up here, Michelle. You're gonna get some more. Okay. Um, also congratulations goes to John Tyson Elementary School for high overall growth in the state of Arkansas based on the ACT Aspire scores. And they were ranked 11th in the state. They also look at growth by region and congratulations to Tyson Elementary for having high overall growth in the Northwest region. Also, congratulations to Tyson Elementary for high math growth in the Northwest region. Okay, now we're gonna look at our beating the odds awards. Again, these are schools that are beating the odds and showing a significant amount of growth despite their level of poverty in their school. So congratulations to NAP Elementary for beating the odds overall ACT Aspire. They were ranked 10th in the state. And Tyson Elementary was ranked second in the state for overall growth. And Tyson Elementary was ranked second in the state for overall growth on the ACT Aspire, beating the odds.
Beat a line? That's embarrassing.
And Monitor Elementary was ranked seventh in the state for overall ACT Aspire, beating Tyson Elementary was ranked in the top 10 for beating the odds on the ACT Aspire ELA growth. They were second in the state. Linda Childers NAP Elementary beating the odds math ACT Aspire. They were 10th in the state. And Monitor Elementary beating the odds for math, 7th in the state. And first in the state for math ACT Aspire was Tyson Elementary beating the odds. And we had Helen Tyson Middle School made the middle school list for top 10 beating the odds in math. They were ranked ninth in the state. And then we had several regional winners for beating. We, in the Northwest region for beating the odds math, three of the five schools were from Springdale. So congratulations to Linda Childers Math Elementary. Monitor Elementary. And Tyson Elementary. And then we had two schools in the Northwest region out of five that were given an award for beating the odds in ELA. So congratulations to Tyson Elementary. And then congratulations to Helen Tyson Middle School for ranking in the top five middle schools in the region for beating the odds math. We are super, super proud of all of our schools. I do want to celebrate that we were analyzing data and approximately 80% of our schools saw increases in their value added growth scores over last year's scores. So I think that's proof that the work that we're doing is working. And so we were super pleased and these are just the representatives of all of the hard work that's happening in Springdale. So congratulations to all of you. I do have another celebration I want to recognize tonight. We have students and Ms. Bogart from Tyson Elementary School here. They were East Project winners for a national award. They were given an award for the Presidential Environmental Youth Award. And so they're here this evening to tell you about their experience and all of the amazing things that are happening in Ms. Bogart's East classroom.
Good evening, Dr. Cleveland and Board. I want to introduce Ms. Bogart. We have our wonderful East program and we were recognized this year for some awesome, an awesome project that two of our Easties did. And so I would like to, on behalf of Ms. Bogart, myself, introduce Ms. Bogart, our East facilitator.
Thank you. Would you like to say something? Come on. Sorry. I've got too many awards. What did you say so far? She introduced it. Okay, then she's got it. Thank you for having us. This is very special. Well, my name is Jennifer Bogart. Thank you for having us and thank you for the lovely introduction. I am honored and pleased to present to you Arkansas's first ever, first ever Presidential Environmental Youth Award winners. This award was established in 1971. So that's a lot of years to go without having an Arkansan win this award. And I'm happy to say that our Green Tigers from Tyson Elementary won that award this year. The award is given by the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the White House Council on Environmental Quality. And so through East, these students who were fourth graders at the time noticed an environmental problem. They acted and they had the opportunity to become agents of change. They have presented their award-winning project, Green Tigers Plastic Recycling, to the EPA, to the East Initiative Board, to the Boston Mountain Solid Waste District Board, and they were invited to Washington DC to receive this award for their environmental stewardship. Tonight, Henry Moody will talk about the project and Izzy George will talk about the impact that the project had on her. And I would just like to show you this incredible certificate, really plaque, that they received from the President of the United States.
Hello, my name is Henry Moody. For safety during COVID, our school served breakfast and lunch in plastic bags instead of using lunch trays. We noticed at our school, we were throwing away a lot of trash in the, in the trash each year. And we talked about this problem during East. We did the research about the plastic problem in our world. Did you know that plastic basically never decomposes? We also did the math about how much plastic our school was throwing away. At our school each year, we were throwing away 200,000 plastic bags in the trash. With the help of our GT teacher, we found a company called Next Checks, a company that recycles plastic bags. We created a multimedia marketing campaign to help kids at our school learn about the issue. And to encourage our classmates to recycle bags instead of throwing them in the trash. We put bins in every hallway and mid-videos to show kids how to recycle their bags. We collected all of the stinky plastic bags, weighed them, and stuffed them in the back of Ms. Bogart's car. During our first year of Green Tigers, we recycled 159 pounds of plastic bags. To help educate others about our recycling project and to encourage them to do the same, Izzy and I created an ebook about, an ebook last year about the, the Green Tigers project. A local author, Mr. Todd, helped us learn the process of writing and publishing an ebook. We used Google Slides to create the ebook and we used the app Lunapic to help us make the illustrations. For our environmental stewardship, we were awarded the National Award from the EPA.
Hi, I'm Izzy George. And this project has impacted me by empowering me and helping me believe that I can, that I can make a difference in the world. It has helped me in everyday life. If I, let's say I'm going to throw something away, I can say to myself, no, I can actually recycle that. This, um, it has helped me becoming a leader and I know that I can help my community. It also made me realize how amazing we are. Woo!
Do you have any questions for Izzy or Henry?
So you went to DC or you're going to DC?
They were invited, but they were not able to go.
How old are you guys now? What grade are you in?
We are both in sixth, uh, 12th now.
Hello, Tyson?
SOI.
SOI, okay.
So what kind of projects do you want to do next?
We don't have these at SOI anymore, so.
It's very sad. Well, look, I have certain days. So I'm going to be doing a project about illegal trash dumping and burning.
Awesome. Mr. President, I don't know if you've ever been on their podcast, but I have. I know, Mr. Ogden, maybe all of you have. They usually ask, what's your best tiger sound or something? Yes, I roared. Have you ever done that? I roared, yes. I did. Isn't it amazing what they can get you to do? Yes. It's the only time I've ever roared, by the way. Well, we appreciate y'all being here. That's a great project.
Congratulations.
I'd also like to thank Izzy's mom and Henry's grandfather.
Parents here? Awesome. Thanks. Things are so much better with kids now? Yes. Okay. Thank y'all. See you.
Dr. Cleveland and Board, I just want to say thank you for having us here tonight. And I'm excited to be here tonight because I get to share some great things that have been happening with our Special Education Department. So I would like to invite my team that has joined us. If y'all will come stand up here. So a couple weeks ago, our School Psychology Department was awarded the Outstanding Service Delivery Award through the Arkansas School Psychology Association. So this award just is, just solidifies their awesomeness. So this team, we have 20 school psychology specialists and they are absolutely amazing. And so this award, like I think, just shows. So for outstanding service delivery, it just looks at the, the best team in the state at doing like the evaluations, determining eligibility, providing consultation and supports and all of that for all of our students and all of our buildings across the district. So, I mean, they're the best in the state. So in 2018, they also won this award. So this is the second time that our program has won this award. So we're very excited for them. Elise, where's Elise? Elise Noonar is also a, an intern with us and she was awarded the school, the student scholarship at the convention as well. So we're very excited that she chose to be an intern with us and she is amazing and we're excited about what she's gonna do. So I just want to say congratulations to our team. They are amazing. They do so much to support our district and all of our students.
Thanks for being here.
Good job. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Good job.
Good job.
Clear the room, trip.
Good evening, Dr. Cleveland, School Board, and. First, before I read what we have here, I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that we put some mugs in front of you. Those are for you to use how you would like. It's a new campaign we're getting ready to roll out over the next few months about I love public schools. And so it'll, we'll be sharing with you over the next couple of months what that's gonna look like. And I'm really excited. I think of it more like an organic marketing campaign type concept, so we'll be bringing that up shortly. But for tonight, I have the distinct honor of sharing with you that we just wrapped up the 13th Annual Ozark Media Arts Festival in downtown Springdale. This year, we had the great honor of having Walmart.org as our presenting sponsor. We also had a gold level sponsors, McClarty-Daniel, and the Arkansas Broadcasters Association, as well as some great partners like Crystal Bridges and Walton Art Center, et cetera. Over 500 students from around the Midwest came, primarily from Arkansas, but we did get some from Oklahoma and Missouri. That's over 20 high school programs, a few middle schools and junior highs as well, over 100 adults. The purpose is to connect education to industry in the areas of multimedia. So it's workforce development in the areas of multimedia and students get the opportunity to do upload competitions, onsite competitions, and direct workshops with industry professionals. And the, the idea is they're gonna build relationships and they can find that the skills that they're using on high school are applicable for jobs in life after high school. So thank you, Dr. Cleveland, for your leadership and Board for your leadership in letting that happen in beautiful downtown Springdale. Is there any questions about Ozark Media Arts Festival? Excellent, thank you. And I want to extend an invite on behalf of the Springdale Public Schools Education Foundation to the 12th Annual Cornerstone Event. It will be held Thursday, October 19th at the Apollo on Emma from 5:30 to 7:30. The event is presented by Harps Foods. The cornerstone inductees this year is Randy Erwin, Jeff and Kay Franco, and J-Maxx Van Hoos. So you know that it'll be a fun evening. Randy worked for us from 1982 to 2019 and he'll receive the retiree award. Jeff and Kay Franco will be receiving the patron award. Jeff graduated from Springdale High School and he and Kay have devoted countless hours to serving our students and teachers within the district. And I think most of us know J-Maxx. He is receiving the alumni award and he graduated from Springdale High School and he is now president of Harps Foods. So with that being said, just wanted to make sure that everyone who's listening knows that that's happening and that each of you know that it's on your calendar and we are hopeful that you can attend. Do you have any questions about either one of those? Thank you from the bottom of my heart. It's my honor to serve this beautiful city and to work for you all and share the great news that's happening. And clearly, there is a lot of great news. So thank you.
I do have one.
Yes, sir.
As that program with Crystal Bridges and was Annie Leibowitz?
Yes, sir.
Has that started yet?
Yes, sir. There is two more installations where the students go and meet with their mentors. The prompt is, who are we? And so the students are supposed to take a photo that represents who are we. They have to submit it November 3rd. And then Crystal Bridges will curate it, select a handful of photos. This is really cool. Select a handful of photos and those handful that are selected will be printed and hung in Crystal Bridges in a gallery. And they will also make a book that will be given out. So I can give you guys the more specifics probably in November, but I believe it's November 18th through the 26th where people can go in and see the gallery, which would be awesome. Yes, sir.
You still want your job?
I love it. I love it. I wish I could come up here and talk every month.
Can't tell sometimes.
Thank you all. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Good job. Okay. Tonight, I'll be providing you with a final update on free and reduced lunch. Not many people that I know can geek out on free and reduced lunch as much as I do, but hey, you know, not many of me around, right? So first part I'd like to say is we, our final percentage was 72.65. I want to say a big thank you to all of these people. Dr. Cleveland gave me a lot of freedom to do some new innovative things. Principals, assistant principals, secretaries, registrars, social workers, counselors. I'm gonna say social workers again. They led this charge. They are outstanding. There's 18 of them and they really did phenomenal work. Counselors, nurses, teachers, cafeteria staff, child nutrition, communications, couldn't have done it without Trent. ESL, Ms. Dr. Bredow, couldn't have done it without her making phone calls in different languages, technology, helped big time with Thrill Share and Smore and sharing those out with families. And then the meal application call center, Spanish radio, KRM radio, and many more. The goal is always to reach every family. They did a phenomenal job doing that this year. I think there were about 500 families that we were not able to get ahold of or reach in some form or fashion. This allowed our team to assist additional families and then it also equated to $460,000 in additional funding. And that funding, I just want to remind everybody, supports things like social workers, nurses, SROs, CSSOs, one-to-one technology. It allows a lot of opportunity for kids to, to have free SAT vouchers, free ACT waivers, free college credit options, free summer camp opportunities. And I just want to put it in perspective as well. A breakfast costs $1.30. Elementary, it's $2.45 for lunch, $2.65 for middle school, and $3.10 for high school. If you do the math, just one person, if they eat both breakfast and lunch and they have to pay for those meals, that's $88 a month. Okay? If it's two kids, a family of four, two kids, it's $176 a month and it's $1,584 a year. So I want, I want you to know that that, this means a lot to families for them to have an opportunity to shift those funds to something else that they can, that they can pay for, whether it's rent, $1,583 probably be a good rent payment someplace to keep our families here in Springdale and keep them eating really great breakfast and lunch, a meal that they may not get otherwise. The next thing I'd like to cover with you, do you have any questions about that? No questions? The next thing that I'd like to go over is we were really in an Axios report. Springdale received an A+ on school safety. This rating was based on focus areas noted in the 2022 Arkansas Safety Commission Final Report. Arkansas Safety Commission final report, and those five areas included mental health and prevention, law enforcement and security, physical security, intelligence and communications. Communication is something that we're really working on this year and revamping the whole piece there. And then audits, emergency operations, and drills. And I do want to say, I want to be clear, that this report does not mean that one district is safer than another. Rather, it's a scoring of implemented best safety practices and an acknowledgement of districts that are making layered approaches to many top security and preventative recommendations. So just know that that's what that is. But it's always nice to see Springdale up there 100% A+. I mean, I'll take that any day, on any, in any report. So any questions about that as well? Okay? And then the last thing is, in front of you, you'll see a t-shirt. I would really love that if you could take a picture of yourself wearing that t-shirt on October 18th. I'm going to be wearing one as well, just to stand up against bullying and put a big stamp on it that we're not going to stand for that. We're going to stand together, united against bullying, and that we're going to be united. And you may ask, why is it orange? That's just that national organization picked that color for that, for that campaign. So it's an orange t-shirt for that, and we'll all be wearing it. And just really encouraging all of our kids, staff, and community to wear orange on that day. Any questions about that as well?
Can we have a lunch that night? Can we wear it?
You snore it. Wear it away. Yes, that'd be great. Okay. I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Dr. Cleveland and Board. We have two items tonight. One of them is Dr. Lyons with some grants, and then followed by Mr. White. But I just wanted to do a quick introduction. I know most of you know Dr. Lyons, but about, I'm going to say eight years ago, might be a little bit less, we knew that we were growing in the number of grants we were receiving, and we knew we needed to have a systematic approach. Dr. Lyons has come in and really taken the reins and done an amazing job creating a system in our district that will allow us to get as many grants as possible. I know you've heard Mr. Donnell talk a lot about safety grants and everything. She is directly behind supporting that from what she does. And so I asked her tonight specifically to come talk about our CCLC programs. I know you've heard a lot about them, but I wanted her to give you some feedback about what's happening in that. So at this time, Dr. Lyons, if you'd like to share?
Thank you. As you know, the vision for grants in Springdale schools is to provide the Springdale educational community, community with information on grant availability, as well as grant writing expertise to further fund educational opportunities for our students. And so focus tonight is our out-of-school-time grants. And I call these out-of-school-time, I think I've said this before, because it's just not after school anymore. We have schools that do Saturdays. We have schools that do holidays and summer. And so it's really just anytime students are out of school. The first is the 21st CCLC, which is the 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant. And you see our totals up there, over 1.6, which is pretty exciting. That's just for this year. So that's the amount that they're getting this year to support students in our out-of-time, out-of-school-time programs. So we usually run, like our biggest program will be at Helen Tyson Middle School, which I think right now she's got almost 130 kids staying at night. So it's a big program. The two with the stars beside them, Monitor and J.O. Kelly, are in their last year, so they'll be rewriting that grant at the end of this year for next year, which is a rigorous process. It is pages and pages. When I say pages and pages, I think it prints out to over 100 pages. So it's a lot of work and a lot of time that goes into that grant writing. So it used to be every five years, and then we have moved to an every-three-year cycle. So those two will end, and then any new ones, our new ones this year are Sonora Middle, Tyson Middle, Springdale High School. They will go, they're on the three-year now. So... And it's two per district a year, which we've often argued that we need to be more equitable. And we actually got three this year, so I think, I think we did it. So, and then we have the Arkansas Out-of-School Network Grant. This is the last year for it, and this year we'll be getting 152,000. And that supports Harbor High School, Elmdale, Tyson, and Westwood. So, yeah. On your sheet in front of you, I just put, we have eight 21 CCLC sites. SOAR, which was formerly Camp War Eagle, has three. And then we have the four ASON. So we have 15 total schools right now being supported after-school program grant-funded. So... Any questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you.
We probably should have asked how many hours go into each of those grants, right?
So, I mean, I would say, at most schools, we get a team together. The team probably works for about 20 hours. And then whoever the grant program director is, the site director and I work an additional, I would say probably 20, so it's about 40 hours, because you have to do surveys of your community, surveys of your staff, surveys of your parents, collecting that data. It's just, it's pages of magic. So, yeah, about 40 hours.
Hello, Board. Dr. Cleveland. I've got a construction update. So at Central Junior High, they're continuing to put on the metal architectural panels.
Is that going to cover up all the brown area there?
Yeah. So all of that brown area is liquid-applied waterproofing. So that'll all get covered. They're, they're still working on making terminations on the roof to get the building totally waterproofed before the panels go on. Yeah, a lot of that will get brick or metal panels, either one. This is the courtyard in the middle of the two wings that we're getting ready to open. So they're getting the base down, getting it ready for the turf to go in. This photo, you can tell down on the, on the brown, down low will be brick. It has the ties built in. It'll have some architectural panels above it. And then they're actually doing the termination strips on the roofing right now. This is inside, as you walk into the front office. So that'll be where the secretary and the registrar are set. So they're, they're making a lot of progress there with sheet rock and, and all those finishes. This is one of the science labs in the downstairs. It's starting to get the sheet rock in place, and a lot of the utilities roughed in. This is on the second floor. So they've actually, they'll put all this block in for the hallways and then, and the classrooms up here. So they'll finish that out pretty, pretty soon. And then this is also upstairs. They're doing a lot of the insulating on the exterior, getting it ready to heat it for the winter time, and then doing all the metal stud work. That was everything at Central. Do you guys have any, any questions?
Yeah, I just have one thing. We're still looking at moving in over spring break?
Yes. So at Central, February 18th is when we have the furniture to be delivered. Alan actually went and met with Dr. Lofton and all the staff yesterday, trying to prep for how that's going to work over the break. So we will, they're going to help us get packed up and everything, and then over the break, we'll move into the new Phase 1. And then the maintenance crew will go through, and then we'll demo out everything that we want to keep out of the old building before we start demolition.
Also something interesting that you may want to just watch, I believe it's this month, October 28?
October 28.
They're going to set the air conditioner systems on top of the helicopter.
So that's a Saturday. The site's going to be closed down to unauthorized personnel, but they will have a helicopter there. They'll make several lifts of heating and air units onto that roof just over that day. I think Trent's going to be there, get some photos of it. They're going to let people get back off-site and, and watch. So that'll be a big...
Cheaper than bringing a crane in, I guess?
It is.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Sorry, your helicopter.
Okay. George Elementary. This is the, the front of it is getting finished out. It's not painted yet down on the white. That's just primer. But that's what it looks like right now. And then this is the lobby. When you come into the new entrance, this, this is the lobby area. We've got that furniture in, I think it was last week. So this is looking at the office. They have windows, secure vestibules and everything there. This is the assistant principal's office. We couldn't get Swope's picture because he was using his office. Had kids in there. So this one was a lot cleaner.
Does that have the special...
It's got safety glass. Uh-huh. Yeah. And actually, in the, on the first picture, there's bollards all around the front entrance and everything. So it meets all the Chapter 8 guidelines from the state. So in, in the back where the gym and everything is going, Milestone had found a problem with some of the footings that had been put in about a month ago. The rebar wasn't in the right locations. So we had a company come out, structural engineers, to see if we could save them. Part of them, we could. Those guys in this photo, they're actually drilling an epoxy and in rebar in the place. And last Thursday, last Wednesday afternoon, we found out a part of them couldn't, they couldn't be saved, so they had to be dug out. So they started last Thursday night, dug them out Thursday, Friday, and then they worked all weekend. And, and these are, these were Monday morning. They had the new ones poured in, but there's a lot of time that went into that with extra testing. And then once we dig all the footings out, we got to retest the dirt, and then the concrete goes in and more testing on the concrete, location for all the rebar. So that was a cost, that was an issue that was from a subcontractor for Milestone, and they are taking care of all the cost. We actually separated out some inspection fees, testing fees, that'll be on them too. But footings are poured. Today, we had Walker Maestery on site to lay two courses of block. And then plumbers will start Monday prepping that slab for all the plumbing. And then on, that'll take about a week. And then on the 24th, they'll pour the slab, and then it'll take about a week before anybody can get on it. And then Walker Maestery will start laying the block. So that, that is a, a lot of extra work that's had to happen there. But, but we, we do have a new site supervision team for Milestone that started about a month ago. So we've found several issues, and we're just trying to resolve those as we can with the new team that's on site. The owner's there. So we're working through them. But, but anyway, they're, they're there. There's a lot of the, the other footings they poured on Monday. Do you guys have any questions on George? Okay. So Springdale High School, it's changing rapidly over there. The job trailer will come out either tomorrow or first of, of the week. But they started putting signage up. We've got the Super S on there. There's a picture of it. It's backlit. And I got that one for, for Randy to see. So it looks really good. And they actually have more signage up today. They have all the championship dates and everything, a sign that says where the ticket booth's going to be. So it's really looking good. This is the entrance on the east side going into the main lobby. They're starting to dig out and do all the grades. So there'll be a handicap ramp here. There'll also be a retaining wall and some stairs that go off, some seating for the students or visitors for, for a game. This is inside the lobby. So that Super S, that's part of the original floor that was in the auxiliary gym. So they're getting all those touches added. This is in the, the main arena. So they've got the scoreboard, sound system is in place. They've got all the chair backs in. They're getting ready to install the wood on the student section. They've got all the flooring in place. They'll, they'll start that, that acclimating process and get that ready to install. So here, this is the auxiliary gym. They've got it in place and, and acclimating, and they'll start finishing that up soon. This is in the hall. When you leave the, the lobby and you're headed back to the west, there'll be trophy cases on this. But all of that stone is from the auxiliary gym. That was around the columns in the front of the aux gym. We, we demoed that out and kept it. So, and there'll be a lot more of it going into this project. But... You guys have any questions on...
That looks really good.
Flintco. Springdale High's Flintco. Yeah. And we've got furniture set to deliver here December 18th. So right before Christmas break, we'll deliver the furniture there and start, start completing all those finishes.
This, this build has gone very smooth.
Yeah, we're still waiting on the AC. Yeah, it's just a delay.
Director Lou's right there by it. He said they work till like 11 o'clock every night. He said the lights are on, and they're, they're working.
They've worked a lot of Saturdays to, you know, just trying to work around, because that campus is busy with games, you know. And so they just work whenever they can, and it's really went, went good. They do have temporary heating and air units on to get that floor to acclimate. So we don't have any downtime.
What's the estimated...
The end of February.
Depends on who you ask. No.
We're saying the end of February.
Okay.
They're, I mean, they're moving. We're going to put furniture in there December 18th. So, and we'll have that break. So, I mean, they're... They're, they're moving, they're moving good out there.
I ask Dusty every time I see him when it's going to be, and he keeps telling me January.
And there's a lot more pictures. They've got all the railing up around the upstairs part of the arena. I mean, it's moving. They've got all of the, the north side of the arena between it and the football field. All that's poured back in concrete. I mean, they've made a lot of progress over there. So... Southwest has made a lot of progress, too. I was over there today. I took our food, our child nutrition ladies over there, and we walked the kitchen and everything so, so they could get a, a vision of what the kitchen looks like and the, and the cafeteria. So we're getting ready to order all that. So this is on the, the east side. You know, they're continuing to, to put in the windows and waterproof. This is on the front. They're actually lifting all the HVAC units up with the crane and getting those prepped to, to start up here pretty, pretty soon. They're putting all the front windows in on the, on the second floor also. This is on the south side, back toward the Shiloh Campus. It's a lot of metal panels and brick, but they're, they're moving through that pretty, pretty quickly. This is the upstairs, looking at the media center. So they've got all of the handrails in and the railing, a lot of the sheet rocks on. They've got a lot of it primed upstairs. I mean, they're, they're really making a lot of progress. This is in the, it's right off of the cafeteria. It'll have retractable bleachers by those stairs. They can roll those back and use it for overflow cafeteria, or they can pull them out, and there's a stage in front of this, and they can have performances. A band and choir has access to it. That's all I had. And so Southwest, we've had a, we've had several furniture meetings this week. Southwest, we met, Alan met with Dr. Gladden and some of the staff, and then he's meeting with specials on Monday to finalize the, all the special, specialty rooms. And then we'll get... And then we'll get that order placed and be ready to move in. So there's still, there's still some work to do here. We're still feeding this building off of the existing buildings feed, which is all overhead. That's got to go away. So we're having to set an underground transformer. And as soon as school gets out, we'll take the power down to the old building and then start making that permanent power switch. And all the utilities will switch over at that same time.
The thing about all this is each of you involved a 10-year master plan. Five years ago, four years ago, now you're seeing what you did.
I was going to say that's significant change in high schools.
Yep.
Had to take place because we decided to get serious about 10-year planning.
Yeah.
Now we got to do it elementary school.
Good.
Yep.
And you started talking about that. Three years ago, we applied. We find out in May whether we're funded. We're approved, but the way the cycle works, find out in May if we're funded. So there are a lot of things that are happening. And it's not just your decision-making in regard to facilities. You asked patrons if we could refinance our debt, which we did and got a lower interest rate. And that was really, really good. Now what we're seeing, we're 40 and 1/2 miles, which is lower than really anybody else around us. Our patrons stepped up to help us with that. We tried to get that low.
These updated facilities, it just provides a far-reaching impact on the city of Springdale.
Yep. Okay. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Cleveland. First on the agenda for me is the September financial statements. I do have corrections to make on the revenue report. The prior year, 2223, collected to date was 17.31. So we're just a little bit ahead on our revenue collection so far. On the expenditure report, the prior year for Fund 1 was 11.26. So we're just a little above that, which is expected with the increases that we had in salaries this year. For operating fund, it should be 16.75 for the previous year. So again, we're just a little above that, which is to be expected. And then the last correction is at the bottom where it says 12.64 for Fund 4. It should be 13.19 was the previous year. And that's the only correction I have to this to present. Does anybody have any questions on the financial statement?
I'll make a motion to approve the September 2023 financial statement.
All right, we have, excuse me. We have a motion by Mr. Emerson and a second by Mr. Bell to approve the September 2023 financial reports. All those in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed to that? Got it.
Thank you. The next thing that I have is the year or the accumulated to-date expenditures with our ESER funds from the beginning of the ESER 1 funds all the way through to September 30th of 2023. You'll note that we received in ESER 1, the spending deadline for that was September of 2022. We had a little bit over 4.5 million that we received. The focus at that time was on virtual learning. It was the beginning of the pandemic. And of course, when we got the kids back to school, we were also supplies and sanitation and PPE. Those were the focus of those ESER 1 dollars. ESER 2, the liquidation date for that just expired. We didn't have any trouble meeting that obligation. We got just shy of $18 million. The focus for that, a lot of it went to COVID leave for subs because we were in the height of the pandemic when we were getting those funds. We also added technology assistance at each campus to help with the virtual learning. And if we had to, I wasn't here at that time, but if we had to pivot and that sort of thing during that time period, we've also used it on professional development. And the focus was addressing the learning needs of the students as a result of them being out of school for so long at the end of the previous school year. The last round of money that we have received has a liquidation deadline of September of 2024. There has been a memo issued by the U.S. Department of Ed giving the opportunity for states to apply to extend that expending deadline for 120 days. I don't, have not had any information whether Arkansas has requested that yet. What that does is the extension is just on the time to liquidate the funds. Everything would still have to be obligated by September of 2024, meaning that purchase orders would have to be in place and that type of thing. It would just give you extra time if you had ordered items and they were slow to deliver them to pay those funds out. ESER 3, the big part of it, it requires 20% of the funds to be expended toward addressing learning loss. Based on the little, we got a little bit over 40 million. We're required to spend a little bit more than 8 million. Through September 30th, we've spent just under 7 million to meet that requirement. I expect that if we go follow along with our budget for ESER, when we get to the end of this whole round of ESER 3, we will have spent probably about $14 million of our 40 on addressing learning loss. And so as a district, I think we can be very proud of that. That, to me, that's been the most important thing that needed to be addressed during this whole process is meeting the needs of those students to get them back up where they should be. You will note on the summary that our largest expenditure last year was the recruitment and retention incentive that was paid in two payments last year. We paid out $2,400 to each full-time employee. This was a decision, or this was recommended to us by the legislature through their peer committee. And so that was just something that we had to do to meet those requirements. We've also spent a little bit over $6 million on technology equipment and upgrades so far. So again, I'd like to reiterate, you know, I think that we have done a good job at having our students be the focus of what this spending has been utilized for and to provide for the safety and support of our staff. So does anybody have any questions?
Do we need action on that report? Or is that just information?
That's just for information only. I know that Mr. Emerson had asked me about it a couple of times. And so we did this about the same time last year to kind of let you guys know where we were.
So it's next fall.
Thank you.
Let's see. Do we have Springdale? Just said, I thought I saw it come in.
It didn't change, so I was like, is it?
Oh.
Good evening, School Board and Dr. Cleveland. My name is Valerie Hannah, and I am the SEA president and a elementary teacher here in Springdale. So as an organization, we are excited to get ready for our AEA Representative Assembly in early November. We are currently, or we currently have the highest membership in the state, which gives us the most delegates. And that's exciting because that gives Springdale the opportunity to, you know, really affect change within our own organization. So that's a nice part. The not-so-nice part, since our last meeting, we unfortunately have lost our local office space, which means that we had to find space for all of our supplies and items and just the things that we've had over the, or collected over the years. So our board got together and we made the decision that instead of trying to store it all, we were going to donate it all to the community. So we donated some of our furniture to teacher space at Elmdale Elementary. And for the rest of our school supplies, we decided that supporting the Treehouse Pantry and the Samaritan Shop were the obvious choices. And Loretta Manzel, who is Bayoree's East teacher, she made four trips to the Treehouse Pantry and multiple trips to the Samaritan House to drop off the amount of highlighters and pens and dry erase markers and all the things. So that was, that was kind of a nice way to, even though we're losing the space, it was a good way to feel like we were giving back. So short and sweet tonight. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Nobody signed up for patron comments? So I think that's everything unless, Board, does anybody else have anything? If not, I'm going to officially adjourn. 6:15, I'll be back. Thanks for being here, everybody. Oh, hey, guys, before you leave. Edit.